Good evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Today is May 20th. Could we all please rise and begin the meeting by saluting our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Ms. Delary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, we have a full agenda tonight, all six pages of it, so why don't we just proceed right into it. The first special order of business, Madam Superintendent, and if you start feeling well, we're gonna take a, not feeling well, we're gonna take a roll call and send you home. So...
I'm a very poor listener, as you are.
But seriously, let's go right into it. First spotlight and excellence, Kara Wilkins, Bartlett teacher. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Kara Wilkins has been awarded the PBS Learning Media Digital Innovator of the Year, an amazing national honor, and we have taken to honoring our amazing teachers and educators publicly in front of the public. You are a wonderful teacher. You're so dedicated to children, but this ability to bring technology into the hands of the children is such a skill, and we want to take this opportunity to thank you for this. Really, it's such a recognition for our city, and we just thank you for your work every day on behalf of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait a minute, don't go too far yet. I'm escaping that easily. If you could, first, congratulations and thank you. If you could just, for all of our viewers at home, who will be watching this over and over and over, not to make any, just give a quick explanation on what you do and the recognition and the reason why you were recognized.
Okay. I teach seventh and eighth grade social studies at the Bartlett, and I have been very fortunate to get a lot of support, not only from Mr. Silver and his team, but also Mr. Holdson, Mr. McLean, to bring in as much technology, piece by piece, into my classroom. And my whole thing is not to have kids use technology just as a trick, but as a constant thing in the classroom that helps different learners access the content at different levels. And one of my huge things is creation, for them to make something new with their information. Is that good?
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Wilkins, we appreciate it. Congratulations, and we'll look forward to more, to more great work.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Madam Superintendent, next spotlight and excellent, McCullough and Merklin Chorus?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am a M&amp;M Merklin and McCullough School Choir groupie. I have their CDs, I go to their concerts, I have watched them since I was Assistant Superintendent for Students for Curriculum and Instruction, and I just think that you should be featured as a group that brings hundreds of kids together in a very creative way. My favorite part of going to the concerts is watching the teachers, because the way you lead is so much fun for me. So, thank you for your work with the kids, thank you for changing hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of lives to get this interest in music for young children. So, we welcome you, and I believe there's a video and...
There's a video, oh, and it's up on the television. We just have a few remarks, and then you can run the video, which I'm sure you'll enjoy. We've watched it over and over again, and we've enjoyed it each time. So, I'm Cheryl Squerelia, I'm the music teacher at the McCullough School.
Rita McGlaughlin, I teach at the Merklin School.
We're honored to be here this evening, and we're delighted to have the opportunity to share with you the results of our collaboration. For nine years, we've met weekly to plan and develop curriculum for our students, with special focus on choral instruction. Over the years, we've presented seventeen programs in more than fifty joint concerts. Each program has a central theme which serves to connect the songs and inspire our students. Choral themes have included "Hold On To Your Dreams," "Reach For The Stars," and "I'll Make A Difference."
We've been very fortunate to have the support of our entire school communities, including parents, administrators, Jason DeCarlo and Kevin Andriolo at the Merklin, and Nan Murphy and Mike Ducharme at the McCullough, and both our former and current fine arts directors, Betty Santigati and Dr. Sharon Clark, and especially our Superintendent Jean Franco, who has invited us here tonight. She encouraged our early efforts, and she shares our belief that arts instruction is vital to the education of all students. Over the years, she's become a groupie, which she already said, and she's attended our concerts nearly every semester. We appreciate your support.
Next week, we'll present our eighteenth program entitled "Music Moves Me," on Wednesday, May 27th, at the McCullough School and at Lowell High School, and on Thursday, May 28th, at the Merklin School. We brought invitations for each of you, here they are, and the CD of our last concert entitled "We're On Our Way, Nothing Can Stop Us Now." These are audio CDs though, not video CDs, so we have those for each of you, and you want...
So, we wanted to bring our whole chorus here this evening to sing for you, but since they have MCAS in the morning, we decided to present this video instead.
Ah, I was wondering where the chorus was, but this is just as good.
So, we asked them what their thoughts are and their participation in experience with the chorus, and we recorded them here for you.
Great.
We hope you enjoy it.
Okay, who hits the play button?
Someone has to hit play, that's what I heard.
You hear that from the back room? We hit it.
Singing group that inspires other people to sing.
Expressing your feelings, the different songs.
Hoping you sing better.
By challenging yourself and reaching onto your new goal.
Having fun together.
M&amp;M Chorus is awesomely fun, and I think everyone should join it.
I joined chorus because in chorus you get to sing and dance, and I like to do both those things.
Because I like singing and dancing.
Chorus because I want to learn how to read music.
Because I always dreamed of being a dancer and a singer.
Because I like to sing, I like to dance, and I feel that this is gonna start my career of singing.
Here, so we have to be serious, so we can go through all the songs.
We warm up before we sing.
Like vocal noises, like in "Me," "Me," "My," "Momma," "Moo."
We do types of movements to help our bodies, like in our lungs expand to...
We learn how to read the symbols, like "DS," "Dikor," "Koda."
We learn new songs, and we learn in different languages.
We learn how to sing the songs and dance to the song.
One thing that Ms. McGlaughlin teaches us is that when we're singing, we have to know what's next.
Just to sing with tall mouths.
To work together.
Always have courage when I'm singing alone or with a partner.
Ms. McGlaughlin taught us to learn from our mistakes and to never give up and to believe in ourselves.
Ms. Squerelia teaches us songs in different languages and helps us understand them.
The notes and the words, so we know how to sing.
Teaches us how to relate music to math.
Great, great songs.
Spirit of music.
Teaches us how to find the courage in our music.
How to make it and to shake it.
My favorite thing about chorus is having other people singing with me.
Friends, and it's like a grand opening.
Actually making new friends and being with your friends and getting embarrassed, but actually having fun too.
Making friends and singing joyful songs.
Just having a great time and learning together.
And your friends are having fun, and you are too.
Best part of being chorus is you get to sing and dance, and you get to perform at Lowell High School for your parents.
Concerts that we have is I could learn new lyrics.
Singing in chorus.
Is learning new dance moves.
Dancing the choreography.
How we groove along and work as a team.
It's good to have everybody like the music that we're making.
Singing in harmony.
The best thing about being in chorus is the beautiful music that you sing.
Is remembering all the dance moves.
Remembering everything.
Getting the tunes right.
And it's harmonizing.
When you get something wrong, you have to sit back down to look at it again.
The thing I remember about chorus is that my family was watching me sing, and they were really proud of me.
Nervous in high school, but I still enjoyed it and had fun.
My awesome teacher, Ms. Squerelia.
Singing and having fun with my friends.
Is how fun the songs are.
We really saw where the kids get their energy with you teachers moving with the...
'Cause I'm happy, yeah!
The song that I remember of chorus is "Light Up The World."
Shake it, and we gotta make it and shake it, right?
Suffling, great stuff, so. Madam Superintendent, all set, members of the school committee, thank you so much, we appreciate everything you do. Glad to have you and the virtual class in for people to see, so appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we move on to the next portion of the agenda. We have minutes. We have minutes from the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, April 15th. We have minutes from the special meeting of the committee on Monday, May 4th. We have minutes of the special meeting of the committee of Wednesday, March 6th. We have approval of minutes of the special meeting of the committee Thursday, May 7th. And one final set of minutes from the special meeting of the committee on Friday, May 8th. Questions, thoughts, concerns, edits on those minutes? Seen entertain a motion to accept those minutes and place on file by Council, Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by say and aye, and the opposed, the minutes are adopted and placed on file. We'll go into permission to enter. Madam Superintendent, permission to enter, May 20th, 2015.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the Collaborative for Regional Educational Services and Training, crest for the amount of $100,000 to amend the existing contract to provide for the out-of-district tuition cost for 49 students plus six additional students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IP, funding provided by school department, budget special education tuition account, to Valley Collaborative in the amount of $300,000 to amend the existing contract to provide for additional costs for speech and language pathologists, occupational therapy, and physical therapy for students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IP, funding provided by school department, FY15 budget special education tuition account, to NRT Bus Incorporated in the amount of $3,325,200 to amend the existing contract for regular education student transportation services to include the period from July 1, 2015, through July 30, 2016, funding provided by the school department budget regular education student transportation. In the, to the Mass State Science and Engineering Fair in the amount of $7,200 to develop graduate credit courses titled Project-Based Classroom Science that enables science teachers to develop effective project-based units for targeted science concepts, and also provide an introduction to guiding student work and independent research projects, funded by the Massachusetts Math and Science Partnerships titled 2B, to Pittsburgh State University in the amount of $11,650 to develop, offer, and teach a three-credit graduate credit course in Lowell titled Raising STEM Standards in Your Garden, for up to thirty teachers during the summer of 2015, funding provided by the Massachusetts Math and Science Partnership entitled 2B, to Edichon Incorporated in the amount of $6,075, teaming with Pittsburgh State University to develop, offer, and teach a three-credit graduate course entitled Raising STEM Standards in Your Garden for up to thirty teachers during the summer of 2015, funding provided by the Massachusetts Math and Science Partnership entitled 2B.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions on those contracts? Seen a motion to approve by Mr. Delary, seconded by Ms. Martin? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Delary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
That concludes permission to enter. We'll move into memorials. We have one memorial. We have a memorial for Alphonse L. Melanazzo, Father of Jim Melanazzo, former mayor of the Lowell, Lowell and Chair of the Lowell School Committee and Chair of the Lowell Development and Financial Corporation and Board Member of the Lowell Plan. Comments, questions? My question, comments? Could we all please rise and darken the chambers for a moment of silence? Moving on to motions. First motion of the evening by Ms. Scott. Request the superintendent provide a list of all instructional materials that the district is lacking prior to the FY 2015, 2016 budget approval, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion was made looking for a plan to consistently purchase materials across the district, especially in the areas art, music. We've also talked about technology disparity, inequities across the district. I understand that art and music is funded at the school level, art and music supplies, but there's an inconsistency that can be seen across the district and across the schools. The funding level is also different that we provide to the schools. A lot of them keep the after-school funds, we've talked about that in the past, and you can see that in what they've been able to purchase at those individual schools with those funds. There's some schools that have recorders for all of their children that they get to learn to play, which is in the music curriculum. They have a lot of art supplies, drums, lots of instruments, and other schools that have very few in the district. Same holds true, this one's a little bit trickier with instructional technology. A lot of the schools have done their own fundraising, so you can really see a lot of inequity across the district right now in that. And the third area of concern that's been brought to me by parents is on the math curriculum and the materials associated with that, workbooks. Homework is sent home, parents don't understand the new math, it doesn't come with any instructions, any, you know, any directions with the homework. So, I'm really just looking for a plan how we can find an equitable way to fund these materials across the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion on that, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we have a district that has a great many needs across our district, and the work will be, as we come into our budget season, to create those priorities, you know, district-wide. I know that different schools have individual plans, and they have some, some schools have more access to resources than others, whether it's a teacher who's writing a grant, a school that has an after-school program, a school that has a particularly active PTA that can afford to support the school where others may not. So, I would want to put all those different kinds of dynamics. If we're going to come up with what one number is, if that's the intent of the motion, I don't know if it is, but if it is, I do think that we'd need to almost come up with a per student number that would then be disseminated across the district, and each school would be getting a specific allocation based on all the different individual activities that go on. Again, I'm not saying that that's the intent or that that's what I would support, but I do think that we do have to make choices as to whether we allow schools to have site-based management in some ways, or whether we're going to kind of make one specific number our goal, and then make it fair across the district. So, that, it may be a discussion that can be had and concluded this evening, it may not be. It may be something that we need to discuss in another way. But I would just bring that up as an issue, that there are a number of different things that will need to be taken into consideration as we have the conversation.
Excuse me, Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would certainly be welcome to the discussion with Ms. Martin and my other, my colleagues, I'm sorry, my colleagues in the curriculum subcommittee, that we can further have the discussion about how we can handle the equity across the district for these purchases. Thank you.
So, that by way, a motion to refer this item, or should we get a report and then refer to the curriculum subcommittee? What is the wish? Motion to refer this item? Ms. Martin? But we should probably get the report and then refer it out? Okay. Better point.
Just a quick question through you to the superintendent or the curriculum assistant superintendent. The math programs, I know we do math fairs and other things, what do we have online right now regarding educating the new programs? I know we have, we go around at different points, different schools have their own math fairs, but nobody, not nobody, not everybody, correct my language, not everybody can attend a particular date. What is in place right now?
So, in terms of what we have online right now for our mathematics curriculum, we still, within the district, have the materials that we purchased many years ago with the new standard based movement. For the elementary levels, it's Investigations and Number Data and Sense. And for the middle level, it's the Connected Math Project. Since the new Common Core standards have come out, there have been other areas that have adopted different types of programs. One of the programs in particular that many of the math coaches have been looking at with teachers in schools is a program called Engage New York. The actual math program that they use is Eureka Math. So, that's something, as we're in the process right now of updating our curriculum and making sure that it's really connected. Engage New York has an excellent site. Materials are free from that site. Eureka Math follows along with that. What the idea and the intent is to move forward and purchase some of the teacher's editions, but everything is online, which is really the way things are going nowadays, that most of the materials that you're looking for are online. Now, for Investigations, we still have the old student assessment books that are very thick notebooks that teachers can, they were for students, so the student pages can be pulled out. But I think there's been a lot of, and I agree with you, I think there's been a lot of people trying to make different changes on, by themselves. So, as a matter of fact, today, I just asked math resource teachers to be a little patient, because we are doing this work in the curriculum office, it's coming together, so that we have the right clear curriculum that meets all the standards. And I say, and I've said this many years, but I'll say it again, I think one of the important things that we need to do, and we can do this by zone, or we could do this by grade level, whatever people really think, is to offer some nights for parents with their children, if that helps, or just nights for parents to see how to use these new materials that we have. So, there's a plan that's in, that we're working on right now, that will be ready, and I will share it with everyone before the end of June, with what the curriculum is going to look like, what are the resources and what are the materials that we need. So, in terms of homework, if I can have the privilege to talk about that, I think the homework and the worksheets, I think that's... the idea and the intent is to move forward and purchase some of the teacher's editions, but everything is online, which is, which is really the way things are going nowadays, that most of the materials that you're looking for are online. Now, for Investigations, we still have the old student assessment books that are very thick notebooks that teachers can, or they were for students, so the student pages can be pulled out. But I think there's been a lot of, and I agree with you, I think there's been a lot of people trying to make different changes on, by themselves. So as a matter of fact, today, I just asked math resource teachers to be a little patient, because we are doing this work in the curriculum office. It's coming together so that we have the right clear curriculum that meets all the standards. And I say, and I've said this many years, but I'll say it again, I think one of the important things that we need to do, and we can do this by zone, or we could do this by grade level, whatever people really think, is to offer some nights for parents with their children, if that helps, or just nights for parents to see how to use, use these new materials that we have. So there's a plan that's in, that we're working on right now, that will be ready, and I will share it with everyone before the end of June, with what the curriculum is going to look like, what are the resources and what are the materials that we need. So in terms of homework, if I can have the privilege to talk about that, I think the homework and the worksheets, I think that's good. But in my mind, when I think of homework, I think if students have a major task problem that they have to work on and solve, and I don't, that could take three nights, and then commit at the end of the work with that, end of the week with those solutions, to me, they're really spending time thinking about something in more depth. But we can certainly have the, you know, the worksheets too. They're always there. But, so that's where we are right now with mathematics. And we all still, for parents, still have the curriculum brochures that are out there, but those will have to be updated too, as well as the maps that I've shared at curriculum subcommittee. We have the curriculum maps that cover every single grade level, every single subject, and we're really trying to integrate those maps right now, too. So that will be another thing that will be coming out and available to parents on the website once we have it all cleaned up.
No, I think, just to respond, I think we all look at different grade levels through our own lens of going through it, and when you have a child coming in now, clearly, it's totally different than the way I learned it.
Absolutely.
So it's not, it's just a different way of doing it, and it, I'm sure it takes time for the teachers to learn it as well. So we definitely need to be aggressive in terms of getting that out to people and getting it out in different ways. I think online's great. I think the YouTube or some type of like discussion that way is one another way. Also, you're gonna have to go to the old-fashioned way in going right directly to some people as well, and it'll take time. But we gotta definitely pursue it and utilize the staff that we have to do that, and really give the feedback to us in terms of what do we need to do to help you in terms of making sure that's done in an effective manner. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so can we get back to the motions that Ms. Scott, are you all set? Okay, so all those in favor, there's further discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Move on to the next motion of the evening by Ms. Ross Sikewitz. And Ms. Scott requests the superintendent to work with the staff to acquire all needed science kits for all classroom grades across the district for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, utilizing projected FY fifteen budget surplus funds to pay for such supplies. No second needed. Ladies, who's going, who's first? Ms. Ross Sikewitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion really speaks for itself, and I, and I understand, you know, there's, there's a, there's a process that the curriculum office goes about in terms of layering these pieces into our classrooms. But the problem with that is you have, you know, a whole slew of grades that are not afforded the opportunity to, to be able to handle these, these educational devices, and that's really a concern. And, you know, we don't want kids to lose two, three, four, or five years before they have access to such kits in their classrooms. So that is really the intent of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
I just echo my colleague, Ms. Ross Sikewich, said about the need for these students to have hands-on science experiences and how important it is and how it engages them in the classroom. We all know that. We had a discussion last year to bring in science kits, the Phos science kits. We did that. They were shared kits, which was problematic for, for many staff. They had to clean out kits and recycle materials. So the plan at that point in time, it was my understanding, was to move into the middle school level in this funding session, which was five through eight. Our last subcommittee, the plan moved to a phased-in, fifth grade, then sixth grade, then seventh and eighth. So that would mean if you have a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader at this point in time, they would never have a hands-on science experience unless it was done through the teachers', you know, own initiative, their funding or the school funding. So at this point in time, we really have two issues. We need more science kits for the elementary level, and we still need the science kits at the middle school level. And I, I just can't see anything more important, personally, to move forward with purchasing at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, I'm a big fan of science, but I, I would like to say that histor, and I guess I say this out a lot, historically speaking, but we have generally put in place an approach where we don't take things offline when we're heading into budget season. There are a lot of competing priorities that will be happening in the next few months as we, we decide how to move forward in our next fiscal year. There are a lot of unknowns, and there is a lot of context that cannot be known at this point. So making one, one decision outside of the, the comprehensive budget conversation that we're going to be having in the coming months, I, I think may unduly weight an initiative that, again, may enjoy the very strong support and may come up as one of our number-one priorities, but when we're talking about, you know, math teachers, and I mean, we're talking about fundamental things in this budget. And I don't think any of us can know what the number-one priorities can be until we have these conversations and until we have the most updated information. So I think in terms of a, a motion today that instructs the administration to spend money from, you know, next year's budget, I wouldn't be comfortable moving forward with that outside of the context of our traditional and certainly long-ranging budget conversations.
I got, I got Mr. Conway, Mr. Gendron, then Ms. Ross Sikewitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think obviously, science is extremely important, and I can certainly sympathize, sympathize and understand concerning the budget. And it looks like this year is certainly going to be a, a tough, a tough year. I think that what we probably need is some type of report by the superintendent, so that we will have that report when we're going into the budget deliberations. And I think during that, with that report, it should be how many of these kits are available already, how many would be needed, and also the cost of them. And the other point, I think, which is extremely important is, is going forward is to have a, a plan on when the teacher can actually utilize these kits, you know, during the day, because I think that we're, we're well aware of the fact that at each corner, there is more information that we want the teacher to put forth to their students. And I think the, there's only so much time in the day. So if we can take a look at that and find out when we could, when the teacher could actually utilize that particular, those science kits, because first of all, I don't want to, I don't think anybody wants to order some kits and then not have the time to use them, because we know certainly that in the past, we have, we've audited certain types of programs and equipment, and they ended up collecting dust. We all can tell stories about that. So I think that the motion is a good motion, but we need that information. And then, as we're going through this budget situation, if we have that money, I think it might be certainly appropriate, appropriate action. Thank you.
Mrs. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Conway, I don't know if you were proposing a, a change to the motion, but I agree that we need science kits. We want to make sure we have that material. But I hear what Ms. Martin is saying is, you know, we have a lot of competing priorities. So maybe it's better to, you know, in conjunction with the prior motion, where we're requesting that the superintendent provide a list of all instructional materials that the district is lacking. I think certainly these science kits qualify as instructional materials. It may be rather than directing the superintendent to acquire the science kits, maybe we should get a report back that includes all instructional materials that are needed, including the science kits, so that we can make an informed decision about how we direct the funds. So, so I guess I would suggest that maybe we amend or substitute the motion to get a report about necessary science kits across the district so that we can make a decision about how to, how to adjust the funding. If the maker, I don't know if the maker of the motion sees that as a friendly amendment.
Are you fine with that? That would really be a substitute, because it kind of changes the intent of the motion, to get a report rather than to direct. Are you fine with that? Motion to substitute by Mr. Gendron, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary?
In, just to...
Okay. I, I had Ms. Ross Sikewitz, then Mr. Leary?
And?
On the substitute?
No, on the original.
Okay. I mean, I, I think we, we can speak on anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just...
I don't know why you said on the substitute.
I'm sorry. What?
I said, I don't know why you can, I don't know why you said on the substitute. Motion been made and seconded, so we are...
All right. Throw me off.
On the substitute as well.
Okay. And actually, just to clarify, through, through the mayor, the motion was very specific in utilizing projected surplus funds in this current year's budget, not necessarily for next year. So this would be, you know, again, like the instructional materials that Ms. Scott had referred to earlier, it's looking at those one-time expenses, and I see in our, in an upcoming subcommittee report, there will be some discussion about surplus funds that we're projecting. So that was the intent of the motion. But certainly, a report would be appropriate prior, prior to making that disbursement.
Okay. Mr. Leary, then Ms. Martin?
Thank you. The, the reason, I think we, we just had a finance subcommittee last week, and basically, part of that was to ask for exactly the report. So it was, I, I think it's in that white binder right there that's at the foot of Dr. Lang's feet, the foot of Dr. Lang's feet. It's basically right there. So I'd like to take a look at that report as we get in, and I think that'll be part of what our overall analysis would be. I think the intent is a good one, but there are going to be competing interests, technology. I mean, I think we need more technology. We just had a discussion about the inequities in some different schools. I think what we did in the finance subcommittee, because, you know, Ms. Scott had a concern, I think we all supported her in that concern, we asked Dr. Lang to go to the curriculum department and ask them for what their plan is and where their stage is right now. And I think that's a good starting point. I think we have a curriculum subcommittee meeting. I think it's the first week of June, second week, I can't remember the date. But I think that'll be held before we actually finalize the budget. And I, and I recognize there's going to be surplus money, but if you look, as we go through the budget presentation, you're going to notice that a lot of that is really going to make decisions in terms of balancing that budget, which is unfortunately the, the state that we're in because considering the costs that are increasing. I do think it's a good idea to add science kits to every class. I think it's of high value. I think what we did in the elementary was a positive. There was some challenges with it, but it did work out pretty good. So I agree with the intent. I just think there's going to be a lot of different areas where, you know, even the maker of the motions will come out and say, maybe this is a different priority for us. But again, I think that's why I supported the substitute, and I think it's probably the practical idea of going through it.
Ms. Martin, and then Mr. Conway. Mr. Conway?
My question is actually for Dr. Lang, so I don't know if you want to ask your question first while he makes his way back in. Sorry to do that.
I, I think I'm all set with it now. Thank you.
Okay.
You couldn't have come up with something?
Calling Dr. Lang.
Just to help his sister out, really?
Mr. Leary.
I can wait until we get into the actual budget conversations. I do think it's important, though, for us to understand the, the term surplus, and so that we can make a comparison over the last three years, that we have had a fairly stable number that gets termed surplus. We use it every year. We count on it every year. The surplus at the end of this year is, and I'd refer to Dr. Lang for the specifics, but is extremely in line with what our surplus was last year. So that it's, it's a kind of a, a standard number that happens every year. We call it surplus, but in fact, we count on it for our actual year spending. But again, that's why I kind of encourage us to look at the whole comprehensive look.
So to the makers of both motions, is it, is it, is it okay, is it fair to get a report, receive that report, and then send it to the subcommittee? I think at that point, we will be into the budget discussion as well, and that can be incorporated. Just curious, how many, how many kits do we look at? What do we, what is the number that we're, we're talking about, generally speaking? Do we have a number, how many kits that we should be getting in the school for the kids?
Yes, I can tell you, last year, we purchased, for each grade level, each teacher, a kit was purchased, different kits across the district. So what we found with that, and that's one of the things we're working on with the plan that we will prepare for you, is that was not the best way to do things at all. It was our initial year. It was a pilot. It, I thank everyone who worked so hard to make it work, but one of the things we do realize that in order to really make the implementation of science, which is critical in our schools, we have to make sure the teachers have what they need. So at this point, each teacher has one kit. So the plan is so that next year, again, depending on budget, the teachers would have both kids in their classrooms. So it would make it a smooth process for them, and there would be more structure to it. One of the questions that came up about time, just to address that, the curriculum team and myself working and collaborating with the four disciplines, ELA, Science, Math, and Social Studies, looking at our curriculum maps, finding out where we can look at the maps and determine where the time could be, where some of these subjects definitely can be integrated together. Some of the writing that was done in science this year as well, definitely, there were science journals that were used, which kind of took the place of some of the writing in literacy, but the journals were phenomenal that I've seen. So it was a learning year. I think we've learned a lot, and I think we will come prepared with a plan to let you know how we can move forward.
So how many did we buy, and how many, and how much were they?
Last year, there'd be one, I can tell you the price. The price was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that's probably, given the idea, maybe it was fifty?
We bought fifty kits for a total, the total, the total dollar, dollar figure was two fifty-seven?
Right.
Okay, great.
So next year would be the same.
Okay.
Double it.
Okay. So motion's been made, substitute motion had been made, seconded, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikewich?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
That concludes motions for this evening. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. There are seven subcommittee reports. We'll begin with the Joint Student Support Service and Finance Subcommittee. Approval of the minutes for the meeting Monday, March thirtieth by, we have two chairs, Mr. Leary and Ms. Ross Sikewitz. Was this reported out already?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we reported out on this a couple meetings back.
Just a motion to accept the minutes discussion? No. Motion by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewitz, to accept the minutes and place them on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, minutes are accepted and placed on file. Lowell, next subcommittee, we have Lowell High School. We have approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, April thirteenth. Chair recognize Mr. Conway. We have not been reported out on this, correct?
I have, I'm going to report out, and I'll make it very brief.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you. The members, the president and myself, Steve Gendron, Kristen Ross Sikewich, and also Gene Franco, superintendent, Claire Abrams, assistant superintendent, and Brian Martin. There were three topics that we discussed, the MSBA vote and timeline, the school store grand opening, and the yearbook proposal. In as far as the MSBA vote, again, very briefly, it seems as though at this particular point, we're in the, heading in the right direction, that so far, we've got okays all the way. It obviously is going to be a project that is going to be very involved and very timely, and we will be getting obviously updates on it periodically. One of the things that we were talking about in that was the fact that high school, it was discussed at the high school, one of the advantages of being downtown, it certainly could help with the, the consumer. The students could be certainly consumers in that area, and again, a lot of information was brought forward. There was also a timeframe on what was required, which I'm not going to go through that right now, but there was a, a three-zero vote on the report of progress on that. The second point was the school store, the grand opening, which was, they had a soft opening, I believe, last Saturday, and that's right on, it's the eighteen-twenty-sixth store, and it's located on one fifty-five Merrimack Street. And I think that was a, I, I know that myself, and I know Mr. Gendron came in too, and to take a look at it. It was actually a fantastic opportunity for the students, that they can see firsthand how businesses are run, and I think it's going to be an extremely successful situation, not only for the, for the high school and the students, but also for the downtown area. And I, Mr. Martin said, the headmaster Martin said that in the very near future, there will be a ribbon-cutting opportunity to have the grand opening of that, of that store, which again, I think is fantastic. The third point was the yearbook, and the, Mr. Martin let us know that there were a few people that, three other vendors that were interested in perhaps bringing forth a, a proposal... that were interested in perhaps bringing forth a proposal for the yearbooks in the very near future. And that the recommendation was to sit down with Dr. Jay Lang and discuss the future of the yearbooks. And there was a motion to accept the report as a whole, to accept the report as progress. And that's the briefest report that we've had at Lowell High School Subcommittee. Mr. Mayor.
Your timing is good. So a motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. Move on to the next Subcommittee Report. It's from the Personnel Subcommittee. We have approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, May 15th. Chair would like to recognize the chairwoman of that Subcommittee, Ms. Martin.
We have already given a verbal report on this, so it would just be an approval of the written minutes.
Motion to accept the report on the minutes by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, those minutes are adopted. Next Subcommittee, we have a Subcommittee, Curriculum Subcommittee. We have a report and approval of the minutes of the meeting Thursday, April 16th. Chair would like to recognize the chairperson of that Subcommittee, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. So the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee did meet on April 16th. Present from the Subcommittee were myself and Ms. Scott, present from Central Office were Assistant Superintendent Abrams, Melissa Newell, who is our Coordinator of Pre-K, Language and Literacy, Martha Cohn, who is the Coordinator of our Science and Social Studies, and Magali Ronan, who is our Coordinator of Mathematics, Pre-K through four. We only had two topics that we discussed at this meeting. First was an update on spelling instruction in the district. And then the second was a report on the uniformity of course offerings and curriculum across the district. In terms of the spelling, we did talk about, Ms. Newell shared with us some of the latest research around spelling and specifically around spelling instruction. I think one of the key things being that, as we looked at the work that we're doing in the readers and the writer workshop model that we have in place, one of the key holes we found in that area has been a focus on phonics, which certainly supports all the other activities within Literacy across the district. That is going to be one of the things we'll be considering for investment when we come to that in budget deliberations. And I'm sure that will be included when the Curriculum Office submits its listing of materials that they want to be investing in. With the Common Core standards, there is spelling instruction that is going on in our classrooms. It's embedded in all the activities that are going on, but we are not, in many classrooms, doing specific spelling lists, especially in those early grades, when again, the research is showing that at that point during a child's development, it's not, it doesn't find a hook. And that for students, that they do better if we wait until later in their educational process to introduce those less creative spelling activities. That was given as a report. Again, motion to accept by Ms. Scott, seconded by myself. And that would be part of our report of progress. Second topic was the report on the uniformity of course offerings and curriculum. I think Ms. Abrams has indicated in some of her earlier remarks, one of the key things we talked about, the key artifact, was a district-wide curriculum map that takes every one of our grades, takes every one of our subject areas, and has the capacity to show parents exactly what will be happening when, as they go through the course of the year. I thought it was incredibly instructive, and while it is a little cumbersome, it's large. There's a lot of information contained within this one, you know, 11 by 17 whatever graph. Having it available on the website is going to be a huge step in the right direction so that parents can access that. They can access it on day one, they can access it on day 30, and be able to grade and gauge their child's process through the curriculum as it's been mapped and laid out across the district. So that will be something that will be available. I know it's being fine-tuned now, so that it will be available for start of year. Over the course of the summer, I'm sure it will go live on the website. And I think it will be extremely helpful, certainly for teachers and all of our other educators in the district. But I think for parents particularly, I think they'll really appreciate having that kind of a map that they can really read and use in order to gauge their own individual students' progress as they go through their year here in the Lowell Public Schools. That was accepted by myself, seconded by Ms. Scott. All approved. I would submit that as a report of progress for the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee, which I think also may count as one of the shortest reports from that Subcommittee ever.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We're breaking all kinds of records tonight. Discussion on the report. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress, along with the minutes, and place on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries, the minutes are accepted, the report is adopted. Next report is, our next Subcommittee Report is from the Personnel Subcommittee. Report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, March 4th. Chair would like to recognize the chair of that Subcommittee, again, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. We have already reported out on this in the course of our superintendent search process. This was simply our Personnel Subcommittee when we did make our selections for finalists. So I would submit that as a report of progress. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikewitz, and adopt the accompanying minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. Move on to the next Subcommittee Report, which is a report from the Finance Subcommittee. There's a report and approval of the minutes of the meeting that will hold this pass Monday, no, Monday, May 14th, excuse me. Chair would like to recognize the chairperson of that Subcommittee, Mr. Leary.
Mayor, we didn't make a motion just so we could take this together with the budget process when that comes up at one time. Make more sense.
Motion to delay this till the report of the FY 2016 budget will be submitted by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Last Subcommittee Report of the evening, Student Support Services Subcommittee. We have a report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, May 19th. Chair would like to recognize the chairwoman of that Subcommittee, Ms. Ross Sikewitz.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on Tuesday, May 19th. Those in attendance were myself, Mr. Conway, Ms. Scott. Also in attendance was Ms. Martin. School Department Personnel President was Janine Durkin, John Dakota, Terry O'Neill, Dr. Roxanne Howe. Also present were Gordon Hamm, Davitron from the International Institute, Brandon Flanagan, and Michael Solicki from COP Sync 911, and James Jolie from the Wave Plus. So we had two items on our agenda. The first item was the Family Resource Center update. This was in response to a motion by Ms. Martin in July of 2013, requesting additional information regarding the process for Pre-K and kindergarten registration, including an assessment of current processes at the Family Resource Center. As a result of this request, a decision was made to form a committee to conduct an overall review of the Family Resource Center processes in practice. The highlights of the presentation included registration updates, including the development of registration videos for Pre-K and kindergarten that are posted on the Lowell Public Schools website, with the Lowell High School video anticipated for completion per fall of 2015. There were numerous systems updates to our website, including, I'm sorry, within our internal notification systems, which allows us to notify school administrators from the Family Resource Center of school assignments, and also advanced delivery of IEPs, enhanced communication with community providers and other agencies around registration processes and procedures. And in addition to that, they piloted an off-site registration process, which proved to expedite registration for a number of families, which consequently resulted in a reduction of wait times in our Family Resource Center. There were website updates that included the creation of an interactive map for school selection, countdown graphics, news stories, Family Resource Center staff information included, including languages spoken, contact information, more user-friendly format, and standardized district-wide forms for families to access, which also addresses the motion that I had made back in September of 2013. With the website improvements and enhanced communication around registration procedures, there was an increase of 250 visitors to Lowell Public Schools website in order to provide, I'm sorry, visitors in a two-month period from this time last year, representing a 73% increase in activity and a reduction in average wait time, as I indicated earlier. So I would submit that as a, I'm sorry, let me back up just one moment. There are a lot of bells and whistles and enhancements to our website around registration and communication with our school families. And I had spoken with Ms. Durkin earlier, and perhaps we can put it up as a, you know, as a presentation at our next available meeting, so that we can actually bring the IT department in to actually walk folks through those changes live on TV. I think that would be really valuable for our families. So that I would submit that as a report of progress on that particular piece. I'm sorry. So the second item on the agenda was the school security systems presentation. And the committee heard from two vendors about the school security systems, COP Sync 911 and the Wave Plus. The first presentation involved a threat alert system provided by COP Sync 911. The service improves communication between schools and law enforcement utilizing software that enables school computers and mobile devices to connect to, connect to an alert dispatchers and cruisers directly. The program provides first responders with the location and provides access to floor plans of the building. A chat page also opens up to allow real-time information exchange between first responders and staff in the building. The second presentation involved the Wave Plus. The system immediately transmits over every live police radio that a cold blue or emergency response event is occurring. Simultaneously, it also activates the school's PA system to advise all in the building that there is an incident happening. It also sends an email and text message to all essential personnel, notifying them that an incident is occurring and where. The system can also send out email and text messages when the button is pressed. Both systems offer essential assistance in an emergency situation by providing instant notification of the threat and location to patrol cars and the police dispatch. By installing one of these systems, Lowell Public Schools will be in compliance with the new reduction in gun violence laws signed in the fall of 2014 by Deval Patrick, which requires implementation of a two-way communication capability with local police. There's a significant cost differential between the two systems. The cost of COP Sync 911 system is approximately $2,400 for the high school, $1,200 for each additional school, with annual renewal rates for a total three-year package of $148,800. There is also a cost associated with setting up the police department that would need to be worked out with the department. The cost for the Wave Plus system ranges from between $15,000 and $20,000 per school, depending on the size and structure of the building. The district implementation ranges for Wave Plus is $435,000 to $580,000. And I might add, this is in response to a motion by Mr. Conway, so to work to put security systems into our school. So there was a motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott, to recommend to the committee as a whole that COP Sync be included in the 2015-16 budget for all Lowell Public Schools.
Okay, so the first, Ms. Martin, did you want to speak on the first item?
I really just wanted to say that I think that the work on the website is really, has been great. It's great to see it becoming so much more interactive and intuitive and useful, God forbid. I would also say, just as we jump ahead into this one, I don't know if it was to move forward with the purchase or was it to recommend to put it into the budget conversation?
It was a recommendation to put it into the budget conversation.
Beautiful.
Okay. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you. Again, I want to echo what my colleague, Ms. Martin, said. The website, they've done an incredible job with that. It really is very impressive, and it certainly, I think it's a lot user-friendly to parents, staff, and so forth, which I think that we've made some great strides. It's taken a while to get this into place, but I think that it certainly does look good. The second point, when we're discussing the safety of the schools, when those two presentations came forward, there was certainly quite a difference in the cost. And the first presentation, we're talking about $148,000. And I think that we should very seriously take a look at that, putting it into the budget, because it includes all the schools and includes the high school. And when I see the response time is cut down dramatically, and I think we all know that those first few minutes can make the difference between a disaster and something that can, we can stop that problem. And I talked to, or we discussed it with Sergeant Peasley after, and he examined that program and felt that that was definitely the best bang for the buck to make, you know, for $148,000. And that is, let's face it, it's a lot of money. But what you get for that $148,000 is a lot more safety for all our schools and all our staff. And I think it's certainly worth taking a good look at that during the following, during this budget right here. If we can somehow find that money of $148,000 and change, I think that it would be something that certainly can help our schools and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? If I could just make a suggestion that we have Mr. Peasley, or whoever the representative is, to...
We have the representative here.
To work with the Chief of Police and/or the MIS system. I know that the Police Department has a separate standalone Laramore system. So I think it's imperative to make sure that, you know, these systems can interface. And I'm not completely knowledgeable on exactly what this hardware requires, but, you know, moving forward, just to ensure, because the system, the E911 system and the dispatch, it's very complex over there. So we just have to make sure that it works. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great proposal, and certainly will support that. I was just curious, though, through you two, Assistant Superintendent Durkin. We had had some discussion about some type of a system that wanted to internet traffic. That was not part of anything that was discussed at the meeting, was it?
That was not the recommendation of the Crisis Team going forward. The two systems that were presented to the Subcommittee were those systems that we felt could provide security to our schools and some instant service to direct contact to the police and increase response time in the case that ever an emergency occurred, that we needed their assistance.
Yeah, and I think that's really important, and I think it's probably true that every second counts and seconds can mean lives in a situation like that. Thing I liked about the internet thing, and I know that there are some issues with that, but the thing I liked about it is it's a premeditative, you know, it happens before anything happens at the school. You know, rather than being reactive, it'd be nice if we could be proactive about identifying a threat and eliminate the threat. So.
So regarding that system, when we presented it to the committee, what some of the concerns that we had was that we would have to have staffing. We would have to look at multiple staff members to actually monitor that system. It comes, we viewed it, it comes in in droves. And so we would have to make sure that we had the staffing to do that. Currently, our housemasters and our assistants and our principals throughout the district are taxed with providing the direct services to students relative to discipline issues. Definitely, anything we can do preventative-wise is the best means. But we'd also, so we need to look at that and put a plan together and share it with you about what it would take to actually make this a useful tool for us.
Sure, I can completely appreciate that. So maybe, this sounds like a great first step, maybe, and maybe the technology will improve so that the information doesn't come in in droves, and then you can ferret out, you know, the specific information that would be relevant. So thank you for the update.
Thank you, Ms. Ross Sikewitz.
Yes, I'd also like to add that in our...
Yes, I'd also like to add that in our discussion with Sergeant Peaslee, what stood out with the COP-Sync 911 software was the fact that there was that two-way communication, which from a tactical standpoint was crucial, or is crucial, were there to be an incident in our, in any one of our schools, providing real-time feedback and information exchange with law enforcement, should there be an issue. It actually dials down on the exact location where, you know, an emergency has been set off, and, and again, allows for consistent communication as, as the situation develops. Not that we would never want that to happen, but, you know, should that ever happen, certainly this is a tool, this is not an end-all, be-all. This is just one tool in the toolbox that we would use as part of an overall safety strategy for all of our schools in the district.
Right. I think it's, it's a, it's a great idea, knowing that at any point in time in this world, something can happen, so, second, it's a, it's a good motion. I think it makes a lot of sense that we proceed and be proactive on this. So, first, well, there's a recommendation from the subcommittee, motion to accept the recommendation, to factor this. So, the first motion, I put it back, made from, coming from the subcommittee, is to recommend to the full school committee that COP-Sync be included in the 2015-2016 budget for all Lowell Public Schools. Motion to accept by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. Roll call. Be included in the budget conversation. We didn't adopt it.
So, we're, just a point of clarification, we're voting on to discuss this as part of the entire budget deliberation.
The recommendation as part of the minutes is to recommend to the committee as a whole that COP-Sync be included in the 2015-2016 budget for all Lowell Public Schools. Do we want to amend that to just make it a discussion?
Mr. Lang.
Chair. Mr. Lang?
The only thing I would, would recommend with the group, and I've seen the presentation as well, it's a, it's a very good product, I don't have a problem with that, but you would still, as a committee, have to go through a procurement to actually select the product. You do have to go through a competitive bidding process.
Right.
So, what you might want to end up doing is, for discussion purposes, you know, looking to hold a certain dollar amount aside for whatever the product would be, but we would still have to work with the city procurement officer to actually go through a full-blown procurement for this. You, we can't just select a particular vendor and purchase their product. But for discussion purposes during the budget, we would know, dollar amount-wise, what we would have to set aside. So, I think that would be kind of more appropriate than actually calling out the name, because that could get into problems if we actually do have to bid the service.
Makes sense. Mr. Conway?
Just for a point of clarification, do we, would there be any information, additional information, that, that we would need when we're discussing that?
No, I mean, for your, for your purposes, you'd need to just put a dollar amount aside to purchase a product, and basically, we would have to work with the, the city purchasing agent to put together a scope of services that would have to go out to bid, identifying what we're looking for in a product, but without calling out a specific product by name, to open it up to other companies that provide alternative technologies. We would have to go through an evaluation process and bring forward a recommendation, but then you would have budget money set aside for whatever the recommendation was. That'd be the cleanest way to do it.
Thank you.
So, motion will have to be amended to not use the particular COP-Sync, I'm sure that's copyrighted, but that the committee include as part of the discussion, security systems for the entire Lowell Public School system, right? Further discussion on this? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
And now entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor, signified by say and I. And the opposed, motion passes. That concludes subcommittee reports for this evening. We'll now move on to the reports of the superintendent. First item of the evening is a STEM curriculum at Lowell High. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in answer to a motion by Mr., by you, Mayor Elliott, the request that we consider developing a curriculum at Lowell High that focuses on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, we have provided here with a report from Ms. Abrams that talks about the ongoing different initiatives, multifaceted initiatives in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And I will ask Ms. Abrams if she can speak in a little bit more detail about each area.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams. Just a, can I just, by way of background, before you go through your explanation? This came from the City Council, from, from Council Kennedy, asking if we can develop a STEM program. And based on this report, there are pathway programs. Is, is there, I didn't see a recommend, is there a recommendation that we proceed with STEM, or is it just a matter of calling it pathways or calling it STEM? And I'm sure it's a little bit more than that, but that's what Council Kennedy was looking for, knowing that STEM is something that parents look for when they're looking to send their children somewhere, so, with that.
So, I'm going to follow along with a little bit more of that story now. So, what has happened since this report did go to City Council? I think Council Kennedy still needed some more clarification. I think the report was an excellent report. It went through each one of those subject areas and listed the different pathways, the different courses, different opportunities. But what has transpired since that report was given at City Council is, in speaking with the headmaster, he thought it would probably be a wonderful idea, and speaking with Ms. Martin as well, to bring Council Kennedy to the high school to sit down and meet with the headmaster and his team, as well as Ms. Martin and myself and anyone else who wants to come, to really talk about what is happening in high school in terms of the STEM pathway. It's in the beginning stages, there certainly are courses and different opportunities for students, but they are building on that, so he thought with a tour and explaining some of the things going on, that that would be more beneficial. I believe Council Kennedy agreed to that, and we have a date, I don't know if it's confirmed yet, but we'll, we'll get back to him on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you very much. Further discussion on that report? Entertaining the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor, signified by say and I. And the opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Abrams, for all your work on that. I know Council Kennedy, I'm sure, is grateful. Moving on to item number 22, reports of the superintendent. Mr. Lang is passing out the encyclopedia for this year's FY16 budget. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Superintendent recommended FY2016 budget. We also had deferred finance subcommittee report. Mr. Chairman, would you like to jump into that report?
Just briefly, I want to really let the administration touch base on their budget. We did meet, the full finance subcommittee had a dialogue regarding why, the premise of the budget in terms of what we received from the state in terms of $328,000, and an increase in Chapter 70 funding, and that the city itself is, there, I guess, contributions we expect, or I guess the budget hasn't been done, so what we hope, optimistically expect, 1.5 million, which is actually meeting, I guess, net school spending, again, so the administration, hats off to the administration. It was part of our dialogue. Approximately $4.5 million, we are in structural deficit, of which this makes up almost half of it, so we're really struggling to get to the other half. So, we did discuss methods and ways of doing that. I think the final budget was actually being put together at that point in time. We did make a recommendation to change and, and roll over some of the, the budgets we put for, for salaries, as well as the expected growth of salaries. We did stay short of, as a majority, extending that as, as a form of the full budget for next year, but under the context of going through line item by line item and seeing the full budget. So, we didn't want to get into a recommendation to the full committee, but did want to have them present, had some guidance in terms of how to present this budget tonight, knowing full well we'd have an additional finance subcommittee, at least one, as well as multiple budget meetings in terms of going over the budget as we have historically. We did discuss, as we mentioned earlier, talking about priorities in terms of, we talked about science kits in particular, having that information, and then hopefully we have some information tonight to begin that process before we get into the curriculum subcommittee the first week of, the second week of June. I think that, in addition, the other motion we had tonight was also a product of what we're looking for, what are areas that we need in curriculum, be it art, music, what have you, in terms of, if we have any extra cash in terms of surplus, how would we have those one-time purchases? In addition, we, we are, under the context of knowing we have a technology subcommittee coming up on June 2nd, looking at those expenditures will be part of this whole deliberative process. So, I guess at this point is really to put this forward to the, to the administration to make their presentation. It's really as a motion, as a report of progress at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leary. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor, signified by say and I. And the opposed, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, recommend a 2016 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all have in front of you your spring Bible. We will be looking at this. This is the first inter, view of this, and this budget is prepared, just so you know what is included in these budget pages, if you turn to page five. So, if you look at this budget pages, you will, you will see that this is all of what was based on our 2014-2015, it went into next year, so these are, everything has been moved up on the salary. We have reflected all our increases, previously bargained, and all known non-salary contractual increases. Our employee salaries have been increased in accordance with the applicant employee agreements and collective bargaining agreements for the 2015-16 school year. You will also find in this budget an amount equivalent to a 1% cost of living increase for all school department unions and non-union employees that have been included in the school committee suspense account for all collective bargaining purposes. There is also funding for additional tuition causes, costs that will incur for special education students receiving services in out-of-district placements. An increase of $1.3 million has been included in that area. There is also included in this budget $500,000 for us to add staff to the third-grade classrooms at the Rogers STEM Academy as we go up on more grade in that particular school. We will have to add that. It will then be followed by a fourth grade in the 16, 17 school year. Additionally, a $315,000 amount has been added for the summer services for special education students. That's outlined in the special education IEPs. These funds were included in the grant, but the grant did not cover that, and so, with the 9C cuts, an additional cuts, there are some other costs we have incurred. The 9C budget is, the 9C budget cuts are $265,000 plus, that has been incorporated into this budget, as well as contracted services, for specialty, for services for $85,000, and additionally, that summer school line item of $351,000. We have been, the FY budget utilizes a $1.1 million in projected FY15 salary surplus to offset the general fund, so that would be rolled into the, the next year. We are also awaiting more information on our grants, but we already know that there have been substantial losses in the fact that the Raisin Top grant of $324,000 that has been used for professional learning, we no longer have. There are some challenges we're waiting for, to get more information from the governor's budget and the, the budget waiting. So, we are in peril of $195,000 for Title II-A and Title II-III. We depend on the kindergarten grant for $450,000. We also have educational supplemental services for $300,000. All these grants have not come to us. We do not know the final facts at this particular point, but we wanted to include with you that that does impact our direct, basic-level service budget in general. We have made the recommendations here, and I welcome questions, concerns, but I also know that as committee members with such a voluminous document, you need time to go over this and for us to have our meetings as, as we plan.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Discussion on the budget, setting, setting a timeframe to discuss it, was that a recommendation from, that I saw in the minutes, Mr. Leary?
Yeah, I think what I'd also like to do is make sure we have the dates for the initial hearing. I thought it was May 27th, but I don't have it in front of me. I also want to line up people, members, to see, what we wanted to do, I think, in discussions was have a formal presentation to the community, and I think really kind of lineup to the whole committee could be at that presentation. We could do it as a finance subcommittee, then roll into a first budget presentation. We thought of doing it at a different school location. It really depends on what the members want to do. We can do a variety of different, we could do it right here. But I think having an opportunity for folks to have a chance to look at it, digest it, question it, in addition to the committee members. So, I guess really looking for everybody's calendar to have that initial finance meeting, and then begin the presentation, begin the actual work of going through the budget. In addition, there's two other, at least two other subcommittees that would definitely involve the budget, the curriculum, and the technology. So, we could, you know, definitely get into the middle of June before we, I think we would get into the middle of June before we finalize the numbers, based on technology and curriculum subcommittees alone.
Okay, what is the, what is the wish of the body? On setting a, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. We had originally polled and set a week from Thursday, a week from tomorrow, the 28th, as our first budget meeting. We were going to have to have that budget meeting to start going through the process at the Rogers School, because the chambers were already booked, but it can be televised, and there's plenty of room for audience. So, that was the first night that we were going to have, like, a formal hearing to start going through the budget. I know we're trying to poll for either the Tuesday or Wednesday to see if there's consensus around doing a community forum for that. That wouldn't necessarily have to be at the Rogers, we could do that wherever, we'll continue to work on that. But I think if we could try to keep Thursday, the 28th, as the first night to take a pass through this. And over the next couple of days and over the weekend, if you read through this and you see the need for information, please just email me directly. I'll pull it together and I'll get it all out to you, so that we don't have to wait until the 28th to ask for information and I have to get it back to you.
Just, go ahead, sir.
Two quick notes. The format is very similar to previous years. There was a request for information on the K-8 class size and student enrollments, and the high school class size and student enrollments. Those are included in Appendix C for you, as well as some information on some of the science texts and curriculum we were talking about earlier. The price is included in Appendix C as well. So, the, the first page, the table of contents walks you through the document, but please send questions along as you, as you get them.
Just as an idea, and I just throw that out to the committee, since the 28th is our first meeting, and it is, can't be hailed here anyway, why don't we book that in a school and have that as, like, the kind of the initial form for discussion, and then begin the budget process at that point? The television can be moved to that location. We've done it before at the Lowell High School, I think we've done it a couple of other places as well. It's not going to be live anyway, because we're not going to be able to do it, because we don't have this room. So, why don't we poll? We can find a location that's located, we can do it at the Butler Stockloa, whatever is most, you know, attractive or best fit for, you know, cable TV, as it were. That might be a good way of structuring and then move into that beginning of the budget process, so we could really, it's kind of a twofer, if you will.
So, the, the intent is to have some community-wide presentations prior to the actual budget deliberations on the 28th?
And we could begin on the 28th. I think everybody has that date booked. The problem is, we had a lot of challenges trying to fit the 26th. Everybody had different things going on the 26th and the 27th. I think before we do the beginning, we should at least have that open meeting for the public, have the 28th, it could be that beginning, and then we roll into the beginning of the budget, and then we can line up other dates thereafter, just as an idea.
Okay, is that the committee amenable to those, to those committee meetings prior to the 28th, which is next Thursday evening? Mr. General?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, what is the date that this need, budget needs to be finalized?
Well, I can tell you that the- Well, I can tell you that the city council has established June 2nd for the first discussion, set the public hearing for June 2nd. So, it would be...
So, are you saying that we need to have it finalized before June 2nd, or?
Well, there is a, there's a line item in the budget at this point, but I just wanted to let you know that that's...
So, we don't necessarily have to have our budget deliberations completed by June 2nd?
Right.
Mr. Lang, is there, is there a date that needs to be finalized, or do you know?
No, I mean, the city manager's office has conveyed to us the number that they can support in the budget, and the budget number that they've conveyed does exceed net school spending. So, if the city council goes forward and appropriates that budget, basically, we'll need to work within that appropriation.
Sure.
But we just have to have a budget passed by June 30th.
June 30th is the date?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend going that deep, but technically, that's the cutoff date.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, we can, I mean, this budget can continue to be deliberated, considering that placeholder, and, I mean, once the council adopts the budget, which will either be the second and or the fourth, it becomes a little bit more, I guess it's never finalized until we set, set the time, set the tax rate, but that's just a timeframe to work within. For the questions, so, is there a motion from the subcommittee, Mr. Leary, to establish the 28th?
Why don't I make a motion that we begin the, the two-part, motion to have that public hearing at a school. We can locate the, whatever's most appropriate, and then begin the budget process after that public hearing is held. So, we'd have a finance subcommittee and then open it up as a regular meeting for the budget. I think that is a motion.
Motion by Mr. Leary?
On the 28th, I mean, yeah.
To establish the 28th as a public hearing for the discussion of the, of the budget, and there will be, prior to that, there'll be our community meetings to lay out the present, to present that to the public. By Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin on the motion, Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
No.
Oh, okay. Discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Moving on to the next report, the superintendent, K through 8 enrollment report, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, another copy of the report you also have in your budget binder. The enrollment point, K through 8, in the binder additionally has high school overall numbers, so, for your review.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions on that report? Ms. Scott?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Did that include a class breakdown at the high school, class size?
I worked with Mr. Dakota on the K-8. I know, I believe that the information that was provided to the superintendent from Amy McLeod was average class size.
I'll set, any other questions? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, signified by say and I, and the opposed, motion passes. Next report of the evening, Frederick A. Abbotsey Adult Education Center Monitoring Report, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a review that occurs all the time. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education came and visited us, heading to the direction of program director McKernan. She brought the department around, and the review looks very positive, that things are going well, that there are many strengths, that there are, there's really good work going on at the Adult Education Center. If you have any questions or want to know more details, it's a very positive report.
Thank you very much. Questions? Motion to accept, Ms. Martin?
Could I just ask, and again, you know, having looked at the, at the report, I mean, the obvious recommendation is investments in computer technology and commuter, computer classes for our adult education, adult learners, which makes perfect sense. I mean, even just anecdotally, you can see how that would be of huge benefit to the population. Will that be, are you anticipating that? I know we have our book. When we have this conversation regarding the kind of curriculum and compiling priorities for the next budget, would your plan be to include perhaps that recommendation? Are you at that point yet? Or are there other options for adult ed?
That's an excellent question, Ms. Martin. And I will have to say that historically, adult education has been funded through grants solely, and our local budget portion contributing to the success of that program is pretty minimal. I would think that in their planning, they're looking at technology. We have not unpacked technology for adult ed. I'm going to be very honest. It is very necessary, as necessary as our one-to-one level is with our young people, but Ms. McKernan has that on her screen, but I do not anticipate us being able to go as deep as possible. If we look at it, let's see if we could start to fund some technology that way, but we have been remiss in that area. You're absolutely right.
And they've been extremely successful, and, you know, we certainly applaud that effort. But I, and I do think that as we look at the program, I mean, particularly with the onset of the HISA test, and, I mean, all of our testing structures are moving towards technology-based, you know, implementation, so the more comfortable our students can be with the technology, obviously, the better they're going to do with the content testing. But, again, the staff at adult ed, they do do an extraordinary job of finding the resources, and we applaud that, but it will be interesting to see moving forward if they need additional support. I'm sorry, Ms. Turkin.
I have plans for next week to try to sit down with Mr. Martin and Ms. McKernan regarding this recommendation, because in the past, computer classes were available to our adult learners in the evening, and it was in collaboration with a full-time staff member at Lowell High School who provided the services in the evening, utilizing the existing computer classrooms that were available at Lowell High. So, we're, there is funding through the adult ed program to provide the stipend for that teacher. We just want to make sure that we can get the services to the students, and we're, we're hoping to get some reconciliation around that by the end of next week, so we can report positively to the state our plans.
Thank you for, excuse me, further questions on this report? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, signified by say and I, and the opposed, that motion passes. Next report, list of eligible teachers, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, here you have the monthly report that talks about our hiring teachers that are able to be hired.
Questions? Move to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor, signified by say and I, and the opposed, motion passes. Next report, personnel report?
Yes, again, your monthly report with retirements, resignations, promotions, and new hires.
Move to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signified by say and I, and the opposed, that report is adopted as well. Last report of the evening, home education, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask for permission to home educate two children. There's been a change in this report very recently. Vanessa Connas of Austin Street and Amy Sanchez of Stanley Street. They would like to homeschool the children. There will be a total of 35 families, and there will also be 50 children that will be instructed at home.
Madam Superintendent, could I just ask you a question? What is sometimes the reasoning behind these parents, and what is the criteria that you weigh to make that decision?
Yeah, legally, Mr. Mayor, what happens in homeschooling, and it's a federal law and a state statute as well. Parents have to give reason for why they want to do it, and they have to provide a school department a plan. It can be detailed. There is not a lot of teeth in the law, absolutely. You have to get a report of progress over a certain amount of time. We get all kinds of artifacts, we do. We're very, Ms. Abrams' office looks on a case-by-case basis of a report for the parents, but we follow the law with the help of the city solicitor and in our curriculum team, we've followed over time, but there's not a lot to it. They don't have to provide much information, but it is a legal statute that you can home educate your child. So, they have to have a referral process, they have to have an application process, and then we accept it and you all vote on it, but we do not have to have any guarantee of how well done it is. And it's, it's something that, for us as educators, it's something we have to think about, we have to comply.
Thank you. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress, actually, motion to approve by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Moving on to new business, we have a vote to approve the amended CREST collaborative agreement, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are a number of documents here that outline the details of the CREST collaborative, our local special education collaborative, that I need your approval of to send forward, that I brought it to you all for review.
Thank you very much. Questions on these reports? Entertainer motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Moving on to the next item, on under new business, permission to post a program evaluator, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is a permission to post evaluator through a grant that we received through the Massachusetts Math and Science Partnership Grant. When we receive these grants, many times, there are, there's program evaluation that is a mandate of the particular grant, and so you will find those descriptions, and we ask you your support in this area.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Conway?
Yes, through you to the superintendent, Mr. Mayor. This, this grant, how long is it for?
I believe, Mr. Conway, this is a three-year grant, if I'm not mistaken. It's increasing opportunity in the area of science, teachers of science, actually, and then they come in to have a program review to make sure we're following the statutes of the grant.
Let's assume that the grant goes just three years. What happens to this program evaluator?
Well, the program evaluator is hired on a stipend-type basis. Usually, when you do program evaluation, they'll come in and there'll be a stipend, and they'll have certain requirements that they have to do in writing up the program evaluation, but before they offer monies in different grants, they make sure that you have that program evaluator hired, and so this, if the grant goes one or two years, it'll only be for that. It's a, it's a interim kind of a position, right? It's a stipend.
Yeah, so, in other words, it's not, it's not something that, that we're, if the program goes away, that we're going to be saddled with that position. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Further discussion on this request? Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gendron, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Moving on to the next item, permission to post for a sales associate?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for a $15-an-hour associate to run the store, and so the job description is included for your review and approval.
Motion to approve by Ms. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the superintendent, this position will be, is intended to be completely covered by the, by the proceeds of the store, is that true?
Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary, did you have a question? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, this is going to be, I think, a really interesting endeavor. It'll be interesting to track how this kind of, how this works out. I think it's going to be, I'd hate to see it, the, the budget realities of it get kind of folded into our overall budget. I'm hoping that as, over time, we'd be able to, much like the students will be doing, track expenses, track income, track profit-loss statements, business plans. So, I'm just, you know, I know that it's hard, we've had a soft opening, we'll have the ribbon cutting and all that coming up, moving forward with the positions, I'm very comfortable with that, but I'm really most excited about this as a project for our students, and I think it would be great to have them report to us. I defer to the Lowell High School Subcommittee if they would like it to happen there, but even if we were looking at something like end of June, and then maybe even quarterly, I mean, this could be a real, this could be, I think, a really interesting project-based learning opportunity for our students, and we can use its success, hopefully, to launch other similar endeavors.
Madam Superintendent?
Just quickly, Ms. Martin, Mr. Martin is extremely excited. They have all kinds of planning of how kids are going to report out about this and how it's going to be incorporated, but making it formal as part of the Lowell High Subcommittee is a great idea, and they're already talking about how much and statistics and percentages, and it's very exciting. So, yeah, they were talking about that yesterday.
Do we have a motion to, to approve? Oh, Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Conway, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next item is a vote to accept the donation from the Lowell Police Superior Union and Lowell Police Patrolman Union. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lowell Superior Union have donated to us a donation of 60 books, Book of Wonder, and 60 copies of Rules, which are worth $888.60, and I would move, hope that you will approve it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
That concludes the, yep, that concludes the new business. We'll move on to convention and conference requests. There are five requests. I'd entertain a motion to accept all five requests together?
So moved.
By Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor, signified by say and I, and the opposed, motion carries. Motion to approve the five requests by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Scott, roll call.
Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just to speak on the combined motions?
Yes.
Just to reiterate to, I know there are a number of student trips that are listed that will be coming up in the next year. Just to bring up again that there are scholarship, travel scholarship opportunities that are available to Lowell High School students. I know we've worked extensively with Ms. Maya and Mr. Jarvis, but a reminder to anyone watching, if they have students who have, who are participating in language programs, who are particularly interested and would be interested in applying for a scholarship, they can contact the, either of those gentlemen, again, Mr. Jarvis, Ms. Maya, the Martha McQuade Adventure Fund has, was established to be able to allow students to travel for free and be part of these, these great adventures that the high school provides. So, just a reminder to anyone watching that that can be an opportunity for a Lowell High School student.
Very good, thank you. Further questions? Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next item is under professional personnel, there is a request by the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby to donate 30 sick leave days to Gary Buckley, Lowell High School teacher, six sick leave days to Katie Dolan, McAvenue School teacher, and 43 days to Linda Hunt, McCullough School paraprofessional. Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway, roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, next item, there is an executive session, and the executive session, the purpose is regarding matters of pending litigation, public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the city's position, also to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. From there, we will adjourn, we will adjourn from the executive session period. Motion to go on to executive session by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Martin, and adjourn thereafter.